So, uh, Marion, you'll take care of attendance.
Yep, doing that right now.
By the minutes of December ninth, um, I'm gonna need a motion for approval, but I have a question. Um, in the minutes it talked about if a, uh, uh, technical medical technology was available.
Yes.
So that did, did, were you?
Yes, I did find something, yes. There was, um, on OPAC, there was, um, a medical terminology proficiency test, yes. I haven't looked at it yet, but it, I did see it on there.
Oh, I found that interesting. Okay, thank you. Uh, I need a motion to approve the December ninth me, uh, minutes.
I approve the list of all.
And a second?
I second.
Okay, good, thank you. All in favor, I, all opposed? Any extensions? Okay.
Alrighty, got it.
Ready?
Ready.
Uh, general public?
Alright, I'm gonna see if Barb's there.
Uh, she is not, and, uh, there's one person out there, if they'd like to, um, make a comment, please click the, um, raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
No? Okay. Um, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but, um, do we usually, isn't that agenda item usually at the end? I see that we've moved it up, but is, is that a recent move?
Yeah, it is a recent move because when we had the meetings regarding the health assistant, the director wanted to make comments before we voted.
Okay.
On, you know, making it civil service or not, and a lot of the other meetings that are online, they, they do have general public after the, the approval of the minutes.
Okay, I have no horse in that race, I just thought there was a difference there, okay.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it is set up differently.
Okay.
You know, because after you approve something or motion something, and then at the end, if someone disagrees or wants to make a statement, then you probably have to have another meeting or, you know.
It makes more sense, I just thought there was a change.
Right.
Okay, uh, on to new business. Uh, the approval of the eligibility list for assistant tax collector, and that was sent to us so that we copied it, and I am gonna assume that there'll be no signatures, we'll do it by vote.
Right, what, we did that the last, uh,
Right.
last month with, um, the custodian position, and I just attached the minutes to the eligibility list.
Got it, okay, I'm just confirming that, okay. Um, it is, um, excuse me, Madam Chair, it is assessor, not collector, you said collector?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just to, just to make sure.
You're right.
Because, because don't think we don't have collectors coming soon. Just.
It was a little faux pas, you know? I do, I do have my tax file right here, if you wanna see.
You've got taxes on the mind.
Oh, I tell ya, okay, so no assessment, just, uh, anyway, uh, no collection, just assessors. Uh, any questions about the list, anyone?
No.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to, uh, approve the list so that we can, uh, because we're not signing, and so it can be done by vote. So, uh, the motion to accept the, um, uh, eligibility list for assistant tax assessor administrator, administration. Um.
I accept that.
Okay, and, uh, Alyssa will second that, I'm sure.
I second it, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, opposed and abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Alright, got it.
Okay, and on to, y'all set, Marion?
Yep.
Assistant, Assistant Superintendent of Parks, a request to advertise, test, and recruit. Um. Okay.
Yeah, the job description was attached.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, my question was, if this is what the assistant does, what's the superintendent doing?
I was thinking about that, too.
That, I can't think of anything additionally that the superintendent would do, other than maybe attend meetings.
Well.
I don't, it's a extensive list.
Yeah, I will tell you that our, um, current Superintendent of Parks is also the Recreation Director. He's wearing two hats.
And, and in honesty.
So how does that make a difference?
Well, because he's on the recreation side with the programs and the, um, you know, not only does he maintain the fields, but now he's maintaining all the programs.
So his job title is, uh, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation Director? Or are there separate jobs that one person holds?
Right, couple of years ago, they combined the two jobs into one.
Okay.
But technically, his title's still Superintendent of Parks, it was never changed.
So is this assistant replacing someone, or it's a new position?
Well, there was an Assistant Superintendent of Parks at one time, and then it, it was defunded. So I guess they're bringing it back, it is a union position, it's in the Highway Parks Union. I mean, I'm not, I don't go to the meetings that Tom goes to, so I don't know, Tom, if you wanna add anything?
Um, the, the, no, the only thing I would say about the director's job is the director's also, we're not official, because we, we're still negotiating with the union, we're very close to the end. The director will be taking on building maintenance as well, so that's why there was a decision to re, to rehire this position at this level, because he's getting pulled in a lot of directions, so they need someone with a, have a higher level there to do that job.
Okay, well, alright. No, uh, okay. Any questions about the, um, job description? You know, when it said, uh, about the, uh, on number thirteen under the Statement of Duties, it says willing to learn and apply appropriate technology for the position. Um, are they taught, by appropriate technology, are they talking about, um, conservation efforts and, uh, a more green attitude? And are, is that a, a, a process that goes on under appropriate technology? Or are they just talking about the data and the programs they might need? Do you know what that means?
I think that is a catch-all for all of it, I do think you're, I think you're right, I do think that there, there's a lot of technological stuff that's going into the way they handle the parks these days, right?
Yeah.
And, and so I remember them talking about the, the greening side of it. But I also think it, it, it has to do with just your plain, simple technology of the machinery and things, you know?
Yeah, I, I didn't want it to be exclusive, is how I was thinking about it. And also, under number five, can you tell me what a C M M S is? Manages, assigns, and prioritizes C M M S work orders?
I think that's corruption, um, construction management software, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a new software system down there.
Okay.
People could, I think, email requests, work orders.
Okay, alright.
I know, but my answer, I'm not a hundred percent on that one, I, I'm ninety percent on that one.
Alright, could you check in if you're wrong, could you tell us?
We will absolutely, we will check on that and get back to you.
Yeah, no problem, alrighty, alright, just my own, uh, edification. Um. Uh, uh, and high school graduation, it seems like a low bar, but, um, shall be capable, um, of obtaining the license, so is a license needed? I don't understand that wordage, shall be capable of obtaining a commercial app, in other words, are you smart enough, do you have a good driver's license, I mean, I don't know how you'd be capable.
Yeah, I think you just have to be, yeah, just, you meet the bare minimum requirements for it, not to just, like, have to have it, but you have to meet the bare minimum requirements. I could tell you, I could find out what those are, I don't know off the top of my head what those are.
That's alright, uh, uh.
I did look up the, the C P O, that's, um, a pool license, I guess, to deal with chemicals. It does sound pools, that they have to have knowledge.
Okay.
The chemicals that go into the pools and to test them. So I did look, and I was wondering myself, what was that?
Yeah.
But is, is that the license that they have to have within a certain amount of time?
Uh, you know, normally some of these.
Within the first six months or something?
Right.
Probably, we put that must obtain, uh, commercial applicator's license and C P O like, within the first six months of hire, I mean, that may be something we may be able to, to tweak on the job description.
Hi Barbara.
There she is.
I see Barbara joined us.
Okay, she joined us, let me put down the time, one twelve.
So, so Alyssa makes a good point, because the way it's worded now, it's like, you may or may not have it, but if you're talking about, uh, being capable of applying chemicals correctly, or whatever the, so can we just tweak that language, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be, I don't think that, yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, obtains within whatever reasonable amount of time is, a year, six months, whatever.
Yeah, some of these, these licenses, they only offer them maybe once or twice a year. So I guess that's another thing we have taken to consideration when it, when it's available. You might have to give some type of training, and they only offer certain classes, certain times of the year.
You might wanna say, within a year or in, within a reasonable period of time.
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah, we could add that.
Some, yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, I want it to be certainly, uh, appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, instead of shall be capable, maybe we should have, you know, must be able to obtain within six months, year, or whatever, a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, so, uh, advertising, testing, and recruiting, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, well, what do you guys think, I mean, with, with COVID and everything? If we, we are to do an oral, I would have to get panelists, we'd have to have the candidates come in?
So because of, in my opinion, because of the experience and training and, and the list of qualifications, um, I think that with the experience and training, you're gonna see that, so, um, I don't know what kind of test you would have. And an interview or, or looking at the guy's records or whatever is how he's gonna, you're gonna be able to tell whether or not he can do all the other things, which is quite a list.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we've had oral exams where we've had superintendents of parks from other towns come in.
Right.
As a panel, but again, because of COVID, you know, um.
So how does that, is there a test online or something? Um, how does, what, what would you do in lieu of that?
It would just be an oral exam where the panelists from other towns would ask questions, because they would have similar positions where they work, so they would, you know.
Oh, you mean, you, you wanna do it by Zoom or something, is that?
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's an option, or we do the hundred percent experience and training? I mean, that's also.
I think it makes sense to do it by Zoom.
Yeah.
So much is being done that way now, I don't, I think it's probably pretty standard at this point.
Because they might have insight into things that are current and, 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 you know, so I, I like that they have an ear to this, is that kind of really hard to get together, Marion, can you do that?
Uh, well, I would have to find a panel of three people from, you know, outside of, of Trumbull.
Yeah.
And then, depending on how many candidates we get, you know, if we get twenty candidates, certainly we're not going to interview twenty, would, would probably.
Why don't you just do the first three or something?
Right, women.
I, I didn't understand that, Alyssa, sorry.
Do you maybe like, how you rate them, do the first three on a panel?
Okay, so.
Like, top three?
That was my, yeah, that's what we've done in the past, we've taken the top, because you have to give the board, I mean, I'm sorry, you have to give the department the top five. So we would do maybe, you know, eight people, seven people, and then out of the seven, rank them, or do the oral exam with them.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's reasonable, because, um, you're gonna be able to, uh, you know, look at your, 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 uh, people with all these other requirements, so then by the time there, you've got the top seven, does that seem more reasonable, Marion?
Yeah, yeah, I think we could do that.
Okay, so what we're saying here is that we're going to look for a motion that talks about us advertising for Assistant Superintendent of Parks under our normal advertising, uh, protocol that, um, are going to do a Zoom test scenario.
A Zoom oral exam.
Oral, yeah.
Oral exam, with the top seven candidates.
Okay, top seven, okay.
You're saying if you gotta throw five?
Right, they have, yeah.
Seven.
Um, can, can I, Madam Chair, can I interrupt for a quick second? Because I've been texting, I've been texting to find out some answers, while you guys have been talking about the previous conversation. I'm all on board with what you're saying in terms of how the testing will go. Um, so the department head is very clearly, he does not want a mandatory licensing for the C P O, he just wants them to get it if we need them to get it. And part of that has to do with the pool, I think there's a big change coming on in the pools here that I don't necessarily wanna go into, because it's not my thing, but, so, but if we have a need for that in the future, he says he wants him to be able to, whoever the person is, to be able to, um, have the capability of getting it, and getting it if they're, if they're requested, but they can't, they don't need to have it coming in, because they're afraid that will severely limit the pool if you do that upfront.
We can say something like willing and able, instead of what we originally put.
I would, I'd be good with that one.
In case, yes, in case you need it, I agree, Alyssa, that's, yes.
Okay, so willing and able to obtain.
Yes.
Able to obtain.
That way, the applicant, yeah, the applicant will be aware of that, and, and they have to be willing, okay.
One more correction, I was, my ninety percent was ninety percent wrong. C M M, and I'm willing to admit my faults.
I love it, go ahead.
C M M S is the Computer Management System for the H V A C Systems, for HVAC.
Oh, interesting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so there, so they have a higher level of computer technology now with the heating and cooling stuff, so that's what that is.
Can I ask a question, if you know that, um, is that all controlled, is there a central location for that computer? And then it's beat out to the schools or, or wherever?
I think the way they work these days, and again, not a hundred percent my, my thing, but I think the way it works is, all of it's inside the, the, the building, but then you have access on your computer to manage it, right?
Okay, alright.
It's, it's getting really technical to run these.
Oh, yeah, I know, like, because I've been working with Bobby Hammond about that at, in Bridgeport, and.
You gotta.
Okay, so, uh, so, uh, a motion to do all those things that I talked about, and that little tweaking that Alyssa suggested.
Right, okay, so we're gonna do, um, an oral exam, and we're gonna rank the top seven, and they'll go on for the oral exam, okay.
We've got, you repeated yourself.
Um, you know what, one other thing, what, is there going to be a weight on that? Are we gonna weigh experience and training and the oral?
Uh, I think experience and training should weigh more than the oral, uh, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, but the oral, it's gotta count, you know? Uh, I wanna say at least ten percent, at least ten percent.
For the oral and not, and, okay, ninety percent experience and training?
Does that seem, maybe eighty, twenty, what do you think, lady?
Yeah, I was thinking eighty, twenty.
Eighty, twenty?
Eighty, twenty, Barbara, yeah, okay.
Yeah, if they, if they bomb on the oral, you're really, you wanna be able to do something about that, right?
Right, right, right.
Be able to say no.
Right, but on the other hand, you don't wanna have this panel come together and have it be just for nothing, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, who is, uh, okay, let's go forth with that motion. Uh, Michelle, Barbara, Alyssa, who would like to make the most?
Who's gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Michelle?
Oh, sorry.
And who's gonna second? Second?
Looks like Barbara's on mute.
Yeah, Barbara, you're on mute. So we'll say Alyssa will second it?
Yeah.
And then.
Okay, Barbara, you should be good.
You should be good.
Is, can you hear me now?
Now, now, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, now you're there. Oh, because my, my screen now says I'm on mute.
Oh, oh.
Well, you're not, you're not.
I know. I went on, on, uh, no mute, you know, and then nobody heard me, so I guess I have to do something with my.
Does everybody hear that echo?
Yes, yes, yes. I think it might be Barbara.
I had that.
I don't.
I know.
Put it on, put it on mute again.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and then if you wanna talk, Barbara, just give us a wave, and we'll know the echo's coming. Okay, so we have that, uh, all in favor of motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any opposed, uh, all abstent, any?
Barbara, do we need her vote?
She said, she said, yes.
Oh, she did, okay, got it.
I said aye.
Okay, got it.
Got it.
Thank you.
I heard you, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, boy, I thought it's gonna be a short meeting for you, Alyssa, alright, here we go. Recreation Program Manager, Department Request to Repost Due to Holiday Limitations. Explain this to me, what does that mean, holiday limitations?
This is, this is mine, this is not Marion's, this is mine. Okay, so Recreation Program Manager, there have been a lot of discussions, uh, going on, um, with the department in the First Selectman's Office, and we've had a lot of conversations about, about this job. This, this job is a significant job in terms of going forward, as you've heard, we're stretching the director in a lot of directions, so we need to, so we really need to get, um, some high-level folks for these jobs, just like you just saw with the, um, the approval for the Assistant Superintendent of Parks. So this job was put out, and by the way, put out, just to be clear, Human Resources did it exactly the way directed by the Civil Service Commission. So everything was done correctly in terms of the technical side. The, um, department requested that we put it, uh, that we post it on the C R P A site, which is the Professional Recreation, uh, Recreational Professionals Association.
What, what department, what department, the rec department?
Yeah, the, well, the Director of Parks and Rec.
And who is that?
That's Dimitri Paris.
Oh, right, right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, he asked us to put it on there, because that's, I guess, the clearinghouse for a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of the, um, the recreation jobs, and so you get your higher level people with the vast experience in those, in, in that organization. Which, so we did post it, we posted it on there for, I think it was eight days, but it was during the Thanksgiving time, so it was over Thanksgiving. So we put a, we, uh, Marion, uh, put the list together, ranked it, and we have qualified people that were sent. Um, but then there was a request that the pool, they didn't, they didn't think the, the pool was, was, um, big enough with the qualified people coming from that group. To be fair, I don't believe that list, the people we've ranked, have been looked at by, by the department, because they didn't wanna start any interviews or do anything when, when they put the request into us to repost it. So there's been a lot of discussion about how to repost it, and, uh, I think, I took the position that I don't think I have the ability to just repost a job like that, once we have ranked people, um, because we've ranked them and given them notice. So, um, I said, the First Selectman wants it to be reposted, and so does the department, and I'm not against reposting, I think we could repost it and get another pool of people, and that'd be great. Um, so, uh, but I said that I think we need to come back to the Civil Service Commission to, to determine about reposting that. I think you guys need to make the decision about whether you, whether.
So, so, excuse me, uh, we do not, I'm looking through my old, uh, notes here, do we have a job description for that? Is there, so how, okay, let me back up, how many applications, uh, did we get? How many, uh, how many, Marion?
Um, I think it was like twenty-six, seven, or twenty-eight?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So plenty. So, um, and how many moved on to the, to the interview process, or the?
Or the, there are.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine people were ranked on the eligibility list.
And so, in, hmm. So we did go on this special site, but it wasn't enough people?
We went, so we went on the special site for, um, the, the Recreation Professionals Organization site for, we were there for eight days, but the unfortunate part is those eight days fell over the Thanksgiving holiday. And so the, the request of the department's coming from the fact that they believe that, I, that if it was posted for a period of time on that site in a non-holiday setting, that maybe we'd get some, a, a whole crew of different qualified folks on top of that.
What do we care, I mean, how many qualified folks do we need? I don't understand, uh, uh, let me put it this way. I think that we did everything, like you said, we did everything we were supposed to do correctly, and we actually paid attention and put the, the, so I don't, I don't know, what does everybody think?
My question is, how many applications do we normally get? If we got twenty-eight applications this time, what, what would be the normal, non-holiday amount?
I don't know, Marion, is there a normal, I don't know if there is a normal.
No, every job is different, like for admin support, I get a hundred applications.
But I have, but I say, through my experience, twenty-eight is a good amount of people for an application in which the, I, and, and I'm only sorry, I don't even have the job description in front of me, because what were the qualifications that were asked of these people? So I'm thinking that if the applications, uh, uh, or the requirements were strict enough.
Well, I do, I do recall, they had to have a degree in, um, you know, sports management or related field. Um, they had to have programming experience and supervisory experience. We did hire someone a couple of years ago, but she left, and, you know, I could do an, an analysis and see when she applied, how many people applied versus now.
Well, it, uh, uh, I don't think that that really is the question. The question is here, as I hear, that, uh, the First Selectman and the, uh, the head of the department want to, um, for some reason, uh, get applicants that didn't come forth the first go-around. I don't understa, and it.
Well, can you tell, out of, out of those twenty-eight applicants, how many were qualified?
Nine.
So I feel like we've done the due diligence there, it sounds like, nine people that were qualified, that's more than what we need to give, right?
Right, just the top five, and, and two of them tied, so there are actually six people that were given to them.
That sounds like a solid pool of candidates.
Yeah.
I mean.
So if I could make, I'm sorry, yeah, if I could make the argument on the other side, I think, I, I don't know if it hurts anything to go back out again, though. Um, if you, if there, if this is, and I think this is truly the organization that is probably the best place to grab folk from across the state, I don't, I don't think it hurts anything to go back out and at least give that the opportunity. If you did that, though, I would strongly recommend you not eliminate the people that already qualified, you keep them in the pool, and, uh, and we do, because I don't think it's fair.
They tend not to be available, but that's right, the only thing is that they, those people who applied originally may not be available when it's time to actually hire them, because we might have lost them.
Not, not only, not only that, but we took a vote, you know, we vote on all. Not, not only, not only that, but we took a vote. You know, we vote on all of these issues, and, um, I, I know that we, I mean, this was voted on. I mean, I, I, and, you know, I keep...
No, actually, this list wasn't approved yet. That, it wasn't approved by the board.
The application process and the, all of that, how, to recruit and apply?
Recruiting, recruiting, but the actual, this actual eligibility list was not been approved.
Right, because it's... I mean, I...
Yes.
I kind of agree. I, I, I do think that if we put it back out, then we, we could have the potential of losing the people that were qualified in the first round.
And it doesn't feel like it's necessary.
Would those original people, like those nine people who were ranked as eligible, would they have to reapply, or would they still be in the pool? If we were to put it back out?
So, I, I mean, that would be up to you, I think, and I, I would suggest we keep those people in the pool. And if you were to put it back out and then to see what happens, and we could do it in a strictly limited basis, put it out, and then see if we get something and add those people to a pool, or, you know, whatever you wanted to do. We could, we could extend the number of people in the pool to keep those folks who already were ranked in the rank.
Can we do it simultaneously?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand what that means.
So can we post it now, but continue with these nine applicants?
Yeah, so we moved six forward, so...
Right.
Are you saying, you, you saying, start the interview process on the six and then open it up again? I mean...
Yep.
I, I could, I think we could handle that, I mean...
Tom, I would like you one more time to explain to me, uh, why, um, this has to be, this should be, or where we, where it's, someone's requesting that we do this? One more time?
Well, I, I think the, the answer is that, um, this CRPA organization is the big place where you get the high, highly qualified people for these types of jobs throughout the state of Connecticut. In that, we did post it there for eight days. Um, they, they think if there's a two-week period of time, that that would be helpful in terms of people seeing it, and also doing it a period of time that is not in a holiday over Thanksgiving. I will say, I mean, we all see that when you post something during a holiday, there's a, you know, it drops down and comes back up. And so, there's this, there's an idea, I, I believe with the idea that, that we would, we probably suffered from number of eyeballs getting on that because of it. I'm not saying we didn't get a lot of eyeballs in other places, because we certainly did, uh, and we, um, and we went to, um, you know, we went to all our regular spots and we, and we posted it. There's no question about that. But the specific eyeballs that we like to see are with, with the specific organizations, and I think the request is to go back out for a short period of time, week, two weeks, whatever you want to do, um, to the CRPA to see if you can get a more robust pool out of it.
So, uh, were these people, these nine that went through on this eligibility list, um, were they interviewed? Did they have any, uh? This didn't get any further than this, right?
They have been ranked.
Potentially, if we agreed to this list, potentially, these nine people, uh, have a chance at the job. If whoever it goes through decides not to use this list, then we can repost, because we have done that before.
So these, so where we are right now is the twenty-eight, I'll say twenty-eight, whatever the number is, Marion, right? Uh, the twenty-eight have been gone over by Mary Ann. Um, they, the qualified people were, were put together on the list, and that's like nine or, nine or so. Um, Marion and I both looked at that, and Mary, and we, it was a ranking of the top six of those folks. So the, that is where we are as we speak. I don't think it's fair to eliminate the six or the nine, whatever you want to call it, people from the pool. I think you should keep those people in the pool regardless of what you do, right? And if you, if you went out again, I, Alyssa's idea of doing, starting some interviews on those, and then if you get some other potentially higher-ranked folks, maybe you could open up the interview pool to a larger number. I think then no one would lose their rights here.
Would this next round of people, if we decide to repost, would the people who get on the, uh, potential eligible eligibility list, would those people only come from the CRR group or whatever it's called?
No, I think you'd have to keep it the way, I, I think anybody who made the qualified pool would, should be in the ranking system, so, so if we were to...
These nine people, these nine people, yes.
Yes.
I'm talking about when we repost, we are only reposting on CRR, whatever it's called?
That, that is the request, yes, CRP, CRPA. Um, and if we, so you could say to us, you could say to us, repost for two weeks on the CRPA, and...
Only?
Oh, only, right, you could say that to us, and then, and say, if, if you get qualified candidates, because by the way, e, even if they come through that pro, that CRPA, we still have to qualify them according to the job descriptions, right? So if you get qualified, you could then say, and you can add up to, uh, uh, interview pool of up to ten people or something like that. So that, for instance, it would give us the ability to put, say, four more folks, or five, whatever you wanted to do, on that list. And keeping the other folks on the interview list, and we could start those interviews with the other folks right away.
So, um, this CRPA group, uh, uh, these candidates are more qualified because they pay the dues to this organization?
So, by the way, you might find out that they're not more qualified they come in, or they might be super-qualified, you know? One assumes that because they're part of this organization, that they have a background in recreation? I mean, I assume that if they're part of the organization, just like we have a, uh, what do you call the compel, or organization of labor relations personnel folks, right, on the management side? And you assume if you're part of the organization, you have done some management and, and personnel stuff in your day, right? Um, so hopefully we'll get more qualified. But I will tell you that if they come in, if we did that, and they come in, Marion and I will go through it, and they're not qualified, they're not qualified. That's that. I mean, they...
Can we make this non-precedent setting? I don't, I don't want to have, I don't want to be, um, in a position where we do our due diligence, we vote correctly, we follow through with everything correctly, and then somebody comes from less left field and says, oh, by the way, um, we want this and not that.
I strongly, manager, I strongly agree with that. I do think this should be, there should be, um, there should be only very specific or different circumstances to allow for this to happen. I think that this could be one of them, and I think it should be. Um, but I do think if you do this, I think you should, you should say that this is a one-time exception. Which is why I wanted to come back to everybody here, because I wanted to, wanted to talk about it, and I wanted to hear what everyone said. I do think we should go out again. I think the Alyssa version, I think, is the right version. Go forward with the ones we have, at the same time, go out for two weeks to the CRPA. We will do an assessment, Marion and I, of anything that comes in. If there's quality, we can add it to the list. If there isn't quality, that's that, and we, we choose, and they have the list to go from.
It's a bit of a disappointment. All right, do I have a motion, uh, from anybody? To repost this position, uh, by saying all nine of these people, once we vote the, uh, vote them and approve the eligibility list for them, those nine people begin their interview process, or whatever the next step is?
Just to clarify one thing, there's only six people that advance to the next level. There's nine qualified people, but six, because remember, we have to give five, so we, there was a tie.
Got it, right.
And so it's...
Got it, yes, yes, I see that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But that they would all remain in the qualified pool, I think, is the thing. And I, but I do think if, you should say that if, in the mo, as part of the motion, if there is another, if we find more qualified people, then you be, would allow us to expand the interview pool to ten, eleven, I don't know, choose a number. You know, to allow for other qualified candidates to get in there.
Okay, I, I kind of need to understand this.
We're, yeah, we're not in there. Yeah, I'm not there in my...
I, so, okay, so we have six people that are eligible to be interviewed. They ranked the top five. There was two that are tied. Okay, so we're gonna go interview them, correct?
Yes, immediately, yes, starting now.
So now, what happens after the two-week period? Let's say there are, I don't know, another ten, twenty people that are qualified. Are we gonna rank them into the existing? Are we gonna create a new list? I mean, I don't understand where... How are they gonna get ranked? Or mingled into the existing rank that we have on? I'm trying to understand this.
I can't answer that question, because I'm, this isn't, this isn't something that I'm totally on board with. So tell us, Tom.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be is that we rank them with, I'd say we, I, I'd say you make a decision that the six folks who made the interview ranking, we keep them in the interview rank. I would then say we, if, say we, as Marion said, we get twenty new applications that are qualified. I would rank those twenty in with the other three people that are on the qualified list, right? And then, so you'd have twenty-three, and we do a fresh ranking of the twenty-three. And if you expand the number of interview slots, say you give us four more slots, then the top four people from that twenty-three new ranking would go into the interview list. I think that's the fairest way to do it, so you don't, you don't want to hurt the people who already got the ranking for interviews.
So then you would have, like, the top nine people then? Is that what you're saying? You'd have the five or...
I would say, well, because we have six there, Marion, I probably would do ten, just so we could add four more, maybe, you know?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, understand what's going on, because I'm going to be administering the new list. I'll be, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work together on this one. We'll, we'll get through, we'll get through this one.
So let me get this straight. So these people that are at the top six right now, with, they will begin the interview process immediately, is that correct? At the end of their interview process, there will be three people that come out at, on the top? And we'll add the twenty people who come from CPA onto that?
So I think that we'll start, we would start the interview, if you order, if you direct us to, we will start the interviewing process for those six folks. And then, and then we'll, we'll try to very quickly get through this process of the posting and then ranking. And then, if there are qualified people, that I assume there will be, right? We'll add them to the list, and the top four from those twenty-three people will also be interviewed. And then, the department gets to make the decision from that list. Because there isn't another ranking of three after that. The department just gets to choose from that list of the people they, that we recommended for interviewing. So instead of the department choosing from, if you got qualified people, that's a whole if, right? You, instead of choosing from the six people, they might be able to choose from a ten-person pool after they do the interview process.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I agree, I motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Ascensions? Okay, looks like, uh, we're gonna repost with whatever, um, whatever the motion says. Marion, when that, when, when we get our next packet of information, could you include in that the, um, Recreation Program Manager, uh, job description?
Mm-hmm, yes. I can do that.
Can I just do a quick summary to make sure we're on the same page, right, what, what just happened, right? So it was, so two-week repost on this CRPA site, expanding the, um, interview list to potentially ten if qualified, right?
Yes.
It's gonna be top ten, right? Top ten?
Ten, which, which by the way, may mean that those three other people who are, who didn't make the list now, if the other people aren't qualified, that, that might bump them into an interview list, but either way, fine, you know what I mean? Um, and then we will, we will do a reranking of the, say, the three that are not in the interview list, plus whatever comes in. Okay.
Okay. I have a friendly amendment.
Sure.
Uh, this is non-precedent setting. We were gonna say whatever words, uh, that would be appropriate for that, so that, um, we can avoid this in the future, and any of these job postings that, uh, are passed around among the people who are the decision-makers, so that we can, uh, know where we stand prior to our due diligence here.
And did, do we, are we going to interview the top six first, right? Is that part of the motion?
Yes, that is gonna begin right away, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. I really, this was not an easy one, and I do appreciate everyone going through it with us. I do.
It was tough. You, you're welcome. Um, the number five, we're ready to move on. Marion, you all said?
I think that's it, yeah. Tom, you and I will have to talk about my minutes, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll go, we'll go through it. We'll figure this one together.
What's, uh, I have a question. Uh, what is the difference between a director and a manager?
I, I mean, I think, I think the general answer is, I think, director is someone who is a little higher in the food chain, and has more responsible, solo responsibility for their, for their job. Manager is, I would guess, is probably one rung lower on the list, I would say.
Okay.
No disrespect, no disrespect.
That's like me and you, Tom. You're the director and I'm the HR manager. Whoops.
No disrespect to anybody.
No, I know. Hey, I, I brought it up.
Um...
Yeah, where the manager, like, does the day-to-day, and the director kind of has the strategy.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
The director gets yelled at for things more often.
He's the responsible one. He has his own responsibility.
Right, I always, like, the director oversees everything in that department.
Right, right.
More specific.
Yeah, right. Um, number five, we ready? Uh, any other business that might come before this board? Here's what I would like to ask. Um, is it difficult that we get provided some kind of list of, um, the positions that we are dealing with from fiscal year to fiscal year, or calendar year to calendar year, whatever you feel is appropriate? Um, I, I, I think that when we have these meetings month to month to month, I forget who, who have we, um, hired, who have we participated in, and so, um, I was just wondering if we could have some kind of running list, or if that is too hard for...
Yeah.
I don't want to give anybody one more job. Everybody's got enough jobs, I'm sure.
Marion actually manages a, a regular list for us. In fact, we, we were talking about it just before we came in, yeah.
Yeah.
Has a, has a living list that goes forward and is constantly, things that, I wouldn't have a problem with sharing that kind of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, and not every month, just whenever is appropriate, every six months, whatever, you know, just so we can have some kind of sense of accomplishment, maybe.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good.
I always look at the list, and I'm shocked at how much we've done.
Yeah, thanks, okay. So we do need that list, don't we, ladies?
There's a lot of...
Yeah, okay, all right.
Sounds good.
Anybody else? Everybody else is okay?
Can, can I ask a general question? Um, in terms of scheduling meetings, um, is anybody opposed? And by the way, if you are, just let me know. So i, if we were to do an evening meeting, I'm not saying we're going to, but is that a possibility for folks, or is that difficult? What, what, is there a certain time that works for folks, that doesn't work? This is just curiosity.
Prior to the pandemic, evening meetings were what we did, so I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we used to do seven o'clock, but it wound up not working for a lot of people, so that's why it was changed to one. But we could always go back to seven. It's depending upon the board.
Yeah, it's really when you guys, whatever most convenient for you, we'll make ourselves available whenever, wherever.
Other than Alyssa, I think the rest of us kind of have boring lives. I mean, it looks to me like...
Mine's boring, trust me.
Um, so if necessary, of course, Tom.
Standing, that's helpful because it's hard, you know, especially with kids and sports and things like that. If it's standing like this theme, like how we have the Wednesdays, every first Wednesday at seven, then that's easy enough to schedule around. But when it changes a lot, that's where it just gets a little.
Right.
Right, we have special meetings and so forth. Yeah, I, I know we have young kids, you got soccer, you got football, you got basketball. And it's always around seven, you know, six, seven o'clock.
But if it's the same time or the same day of the week, it's usually no big deal.
Right.
Around that.
Um, and, and, and let me apologize. These special meetings are all me, by the way. So I apologize. Just the timing of sometimes gets crazy. And so I've been pushing Marion to do some of these special meetings. So I apologize. We're hopefully going to get back on the regular track of these regular meetings.
Right.
And, and I apologize too that I was on the roads and I, I, I had it in my calendar and I apologize. I, I just had to go in this morning.
No problem. Uh, here's just what I'm going to ask. We're supposed to have a meeting next Wednesday.
Um, so I, I need to talk to Marion because we may, we may, I hate to do this to you guys, but I may need to have you do that meeting next week. Um, so let me, let me talk to Marion and then we'll get back to you ASAP, okay?
Okay, sure.
And, and just so you guys know how it works, we are required to have it posted forty-eight hours before you.
Right.
So we will never have a meeting with less than forty-eight hours.
The only thing is I'm in a training that day, next Wednesday, I'm in a four-day training. I won't be able to make that training until, um, the evening. Until after four thirty.
You make the meeting, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Do you do it next Wednesday?
Oh, so next Wednesday, we can have an evening meeting. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's okay. Just because I have a training all day.
Right with me. Barbara, how, how are you fixed for evenings?
Well, being an older folk, I just have to work around doctors and I have no doctor appointment.
So you're saying, um, on the tenth is going to be, uh, what's good, Alyssa?
Um, I'm good after four thirty, anytime after four thirty.
So five o'clock?
Five o'clock, o'clock.
Five o'clock's fine for me. It's Barbara.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. Are you bringing something for us to eat, Tom?
I'm going to ship brownies to everybody's door. But if you ate my brownies that I made, by the way, you'd never.
Magic brownies or something.
That'd be funny for the next meeting.
Thank you, everyone. I think we can adjourn before we get in trouble.
Yes, that's exactly right.